Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Special Board Meeting of Adelanto Elementary School District. The day is Tuesday, March the 28th, 2023, and the time is 5:01. Call to order, Mrs. LeVey, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Benz, present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, present. Section 104, Pledge of Allegiance, will everybody please stand and place your right hand over your heart? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Section two, adoption of the agenda. Mrs. LeVey, do we have any proposed additions, deletions, or adjustment in order of business?
Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Turner, a motion to adopt the agenda.
Benz, I second.
Please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion passed 4:0. Moving on to section three. Public testimony for open session. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items must complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Public comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although the Board of Trustees cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, the Board of Trustees listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session item. The board limits total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allotted for public presentations depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional persons speak only if they have something new to add. Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Madam President, for ADTA, we'd like to, Ms. Casey Lopez, she here this evening, I know that Ms. Raider had asked that she speak on behalf of ADTA, say she had Lopez. I am so sorry.
Good evening, Board and trustees. So I'm mostly going to be speaking on behalf for Ms. Jennifer Raider this evening. So I'm kind of going to be reading off of her speech that she sent me that she wanted to address you with tonight. So, good evening, trustees, and thank you again for the honor of being able to address you here tonight. I recognize the burden of responsibility you feel. You are the leaders of this district. She would like to thank the board and the district for the bargaining sessions this year that were far and away more respectful than we've encountered in the past, even with the hiccups that we know we've been experiencing with them. Adelanto teachers love our students and families. We love our jobs. It's partly why we're all still here. The challenges are new every day, and we are dedicated to our craft, and we wouldn't be in this field of work. There are rough days. There are rewarding days. There are days when we are exhausted down to our bones. I think we can speak for all of us when I say we are energized by our students when they are excited by learning, and we are energized by new ideas for our classes. Spring has sprung, though, and the end of the year with all its challenges and celebrations is rushing in on us. I am encouraged by the progress we have made with negotiations. A little appreciation goes a long way. We still have concerns about large class sizes, and we still have safety concerns for students and staff alike. In the wake of even more school violence in our media and our news and even here within our own district, we are very concerned about safety protocols for our staff and our students. I am hopeful that the board will pick the best candidate to fill Halyecky's seat on the basis that you find someone with a legacy of support for our schools and teachers and students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience for CSCA this evening, or Mr. Duran, do you see anyone on Zoom that could speak on behalf of CSCA?
Negative, not online.
Madam President, we will then move to the audience members. This evening, we'd like to call up Mr. Robert Zubia to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. Well, finally, this day is upon us, a day that can either move us forward towards more positive objectives and results or continue promoting stagnation throughout this community. I believe this issue has taken far too much of everyone's time and effort. If word is given this evening that a fair increase will be granted, we, the teachers, will no longer have to spend our valuable time thinking about how the board does not care about this community it serves in a satisfactory manner. We will no longer have to strategize to obtain what truly belongs to us or spend valuable time creating presentations such as this one. Instead, our efforts can be invested in our students, preparing them for their futures. That is exactly where our efforts need to be going. Other districts are fighting for a hefty 30% increase. We, on the other hand, are proposing a much more reasonable 18% increase. I believe that if you make the right decision and grant us what we are asking for, if that happens, we can do our job in a much more joyous manner. In turn, I believe this will have a positive effect on our students as well. If they sense our increased positivity, they in turn may increase their efforts in acquisition of their studies as well. And that is very important at this time of year with state testing right around the corner. Granny and us, our petition indeed may have a positive effect on student test scores and results. Conjointly, let's not forget about the bus drivers. They need to be treated, they need to be treated better also. All year long, I have heard about drivers being unhappy and not fulfilling their routes, forcing administration to come up with last-minute solutions. I believe this indeed affects our students' attitudes about the kind of day they are going to have as well. When they cannot rely on being picked up promptly, they may begin to contemplate ideas such as, wow, I am expected to learn and give it all I've got, yet my bus driver doesn't believe I am worth picking up on time. What a powerful and negative message this sends to our young students. And again, the responsibility does not fully lie on the bus drivers. It lies on how they are not being treated and compensated correctly by the board. If they are treated accordingly, this problem should diminish within a reasonable timeframe. Nevertheless, healing can begin this evening if the right decision is made by the board. If it is done, we can all end this year on a great note and begin with with the same positive energy next year as well. I encourage you to do so. Otherwise, the opposite will most likely take place, and that is escalation. I believe this because the spirit of ADTA is at an all-time high and far from giving in. We work diligently for this community we care about, and we are not about to stop petitioning for what is rightfully ours until we are competitively compensated with our neighboring districts. Thank you very much, and I wish you a good evening.
Next, we'd like to call Mr. McDonald to the podium, please.
Hey, greetings. I'm an educator from Masonville Middle School. Firstly, I'm asking the board to adopt a resolution to ban parents from our schools during school hours. There was an incident today at our school that was alarming, dangerous, and could have easily have resulted in a statistics on a news network. Okay, to be quite honest, it scared a lot of our teachers, and we got lucky today. I believe if, I believe it was passed years ago that we are supposed to be a closed school. I could be wrong, but it would be prudent for the safety of everyone on our campuses. If you adopt a resolution and a blanket email to everyone in our district, please make this a priority today. Okay, secondly, I'm dusted off in speaking here today for the sake of teacher pay. I think we had a raise of about 4% raise over the past two years. In 2021, inflation was 7%. In 2022, inflation was 6.5%. Currently, inflation is 6%, and it's skyrocketing. That's a grand total between 2021 and now of 19.5% inflation. Then you add the factor that we are the lowest-paid district in the high desert. This means that our teachers have had to take a pay cut of about 15% for the past two years. Okay, LA just settled for 30%. I personally use the word "strike" liberally with among my peers. I think we should strike, and I think we will strike because I because I think that striking is what is needed to get the job done, to get fair pay. Let's see now. It would, oh, just one more thing. It would do you service not to always be at war with your teachers. It sets a bad graphic for our district. Thank you very much.
Next, we'd like to welcome Melanie Caven to the podium. Caven?
Good evening, Board members, school district employees, and audience members. Again, at the last board meeting, I came to discuss an issue that I was having booking a field trip for my students at Gus Franklin. And I urge you to take immediate action to rectify this situation, and you did just that. And I want to thank you. Tonight, I want to thank Dr. Dweizen. Yes. Yes. Thank you, Dr. Dweizen, for calling me the very next day and trying to address the issue, and most importantly, coming up with a solution. I want to thank Mr. Kraus and Trustee Webster for visiting my class on Thursday and addressing the issue and talking about ways that we can rectify it. And once again, Dr. or Mr. Kraus coming on Friday to help with a special project that my students had and participating in that, so I wanted to thank you for that as well. As a result of your guys' hard work, I'm happy to report that I was able to book a field trip for my kindergarten students as well as the two other classes, and we are going to the Big Bear Alpine Zoo. So I thank you for that, and I really appreciate your efforts to make this a reality for our kids. That's what's important. Yes, working together, that's when things happen. Thank you for not only listening to what I had to say but jumping into action. So now, as far as negotiations go, we need the same thing here. We need action. We need your words to follow through with action. So if you say that you support us and that you trust us and that you want us to stay, show us. Show us with your actions. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to call Mr. John Allen to the podium. Is Mr. Allen in the audience, or Mr. Duran, is he on Zoom?
He's not a Zoom participant.
Okay, that was the, Madam President, that was the last public speaking card that I have at this time.
Thank you. Yes. Right now, we are going to go into a moment of silence for the six people that lost their lives in Tennessee. Thank you. Moving on to section four, new business. 4.01, trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the purchase of Hill Impact History Science, Social Science curriculum for TK through eighth grades and professional development for teachers. We're open for discussion.
Benz, I motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Trustee Turner, a second.
Does any trustee have anything they'd like to discuss?
Yeah, can I have somebody further go into detail on this? Are we adopting the entire curriculum or just the just the publisher?
Dr. Dweizen, I'm going to let you answer that question.
Thank you very much for that question. So this motion allows us to move forward with the purchase of materials so that our teachers have all of the textbooks and things that they need prior to the school year starting. In addition, there was a request from the board to additionally hold a workshop in which we have our parents, our teachers, our board members, all a part of that. And so that has been scheduled in a way where we know that the textbooks don't cover everything. So what are we doing to make sure that we go in depth? And how are we creating those resources for our teachers? So that is being worked on currently.
Okay, and at that board shop, we will still have the ability, availability to discuss what we do and do not want in the books, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all.
Trustee Turner?
I have no comment.
Mrs. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Benz for the vote or Benz for comment? No. I looked through it, and I liked the book. I liked that he gave newer perspectives to what I was learned, you know, like they have things in there that I learned as an adult. So I liked it. I liked the color. I liked the first, I forget the word, the first, not the first person, the first source. And I liked it. So I have an I, an I from Benz.
Okay, and trustee LaFrench. LaFrench, I. Motion passed 4:0. Thank you. Moving on to section 4.02. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the estimated expenses for Victoria McGathlin Elementary Students, Melva Davis Academy of Excellence, Middle School Students, Parents, Chaperones, Superintendent, Cabinet, Administrations, and Coaches for the State History Day Competition in Sacramento. So I'm excited.
Trustee Turner, a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Benz, I second.
Is there any discussion from the board members?
I'm just excited for him.
Benz?
I have none, but I'm proud of our kids and our teachers and our parents.
I'm proud to, trustee Turner?
Yes, I concur. I'm always happy when our students can go to the state Capitol and represent our district. So congratulations again, and looking forward to the report back.
Thank you, Mrs. LeVey. Can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
Trustee LaFrench, I. Motion passed 4:0. Moving on to section 4.03, process to interview and appoint a candidate for the vacancy within trustee area three. Mr. Kraus?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board and members of the community that are with us in person and out there in Zoom. This evening, I just wanted to give a brief synopsis of how we got to where we're at. Unfortunately, on February 6th, trustee Halyek has passed away, which created a vacancy on our board. And with that, we have 60 days by ed code to fill that vacancy. And so we went through a process of advertising our vacancy through social media, through our website, in the newspaper, through many different avenues to solicit candidates for that area. And this evening, before the board on the next future item, the board will be interviewing potential candidates to fill that vacancy. We had until April 7th to fill the vacancy. So we are within our timeline, legal timeline, to fill that vacancy this evening. With that, this is just an informational item, giving a little bit of background of how we got to where we're at this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to section 4.04. Interview and appoint a Board of Trustees candidate for trustee area three. Trustees will interview any new candidates and appoint a candidate for trustee area three. Z, you want to help me out?
Yes, Madam President. So at this time, the Board of Trustees can select the first candidate that will be interviewed, and Ms. Peralta will take the other candidate to a conference room until the questions are done.
We will interview Mrs. Martha Lopez first. Okay, let's begin. Number one is you, my dear.
You. Alrighty, good evening, dear. I would like to start my first question with, can you provide the board a detailed example of the last occasion where you negotiated a resolution to a problem that worked in everyone's best interests? Good evening. Thank you for having me here. And the last time that I resolved a problem for everyone's interest was at my work and fast food. I had an issue, well, I had a customer who had an issue with their order. And instead of going back and forth, you know, I went straight to management. I told them what the issue was. And then from there, they gave me the steps to, you know, reimburse her money, get her order right. You want to make sure that that customer was happy and satisfied so she wouldn't leave us a bad review. So it all worked out in our favor. We didn't get no bad reviews. She got her money back and her order right, and we fixed that problem immediately. You're welcome. Okay, alrighty. And then my second question would be, board members are trusted and charged with governing responsibility and effectively to accomplish the district's business. What comes to mind when you think of this detail? Integrity, first and foremost, because whether we're being watched or not, we want to make sure that that job is getting done, and we should hold ourselves to a high standard to ensure that we do that job right. Not only right, but that we have our morals involved, which whatever is right or wrong, we can face that while we're making a decision. You're welcome.
Okay, it's my turn, Ms. Lopez. Thank you for your application.
Thank you.
As a board member, you will be asked to commit a substantial amount of time to represent the district. Are you able to attend conferences, workshops to acquire the knowledge and skills needed to become an effective board member?
My answer to that is yes. I've been given the opportunity to stay at home with my children, so I make their education a priority, anything that I need to be involved in, I am always there. I volunteer in the classrooms currently right now. I am part of their school site council, and I'm eager to get more involved in the district to ensure that not only my children have a good education, but their peers as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And my next question is, how do you feel the board handled the challenges caused by COVID in regards to distant learning and following state mandates?
I feel that the board handled it just as we all did during that time, which, you know, we did the very best that we could, given the circumstances that we were in. It was on you to us, and you guys went through training and gave, you know, support to the families and their children with online classes, online parent-teacher conferences, awards online. So I thought that was very important, you know, to keep us in the loop as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now it's my turn. I'm over here. Tell us how you handled a situation in which someone disagreed with an idea or a vision that was very important to you.
The way I've handled something like that was, you know, I first and foremost, I'm very open-minded, so I like to hear everyone's point of view. Whether I agree with it or not, I have to step back and realize, hey, this might be the best solution at this time for that, and I have to agree to disagree. Even if it was very important to me, if I feel like I'm not agreeing with that person on their views, I need to step back and see where they are coming from as well and be sensitive to their point of view as well, and I would like that back.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is, please tell us about an experience when you had to think on your own two-two feet to make a difficult when you had to think on your own two two feet to make a difficulty decision in face of much opposition.
Okay, so when I worked in fast food, I was assistant manager to my manager. And when we were very short staff, we had another shift manager call off on our shift. So I had to make the decision of how we were going to run that shift and make sure everyone got their breaks. Everyone, you know, the deposits still had to be made. The inventory still had to be done. So I not only called for I called for someone on like in call, what do you say, like? Hmm, I called for help basically. And if I didn't get that help in that time, then it was up to me and my team to make sure we still ran the shift as, you know, we were five person shift instead of three people.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I should have stated in the beginning that we are writing as you're talking. So it's not that we're not paying attention. And I write down everything as fast as I can, right? So I can hear you, even though I'm not looking up. So I apologize.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Okay, moving on to question seven. What do you envision as a successful district?
I feel like I share the same vision, very similar to Adelantos, which is to make sure that our children are prepared for high school, college, life, their career and beyond. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that they have the right resources and those resources be available to them, and they know where to get them.
Thank you. Question number eight, what kind of attitudes and behaviors do you find most helpful when working on a team?
Um, I feel like a lot of people say very positive attitudes. So I do feel that that is a great work environment to be around, but also very realistic. We need to deal with the problems that we have at hand and be sensitive to everyone's point of view in order to get things done.
Thank you very much. This concludes the interview process right now.
Okay, thank you so much for having me.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
We will now have Miguel Soto.
He is on his way down, and Ms. Peralta is bringing him.
Thank you. A little jeopardy. I can't sing too. Good evening, Mr. Santos. I, Soto, I'm sorry. Junior, okay, I've messed that all up, and I truly apologize. I do. We want to thank you for coming. We're going to ask you a series of questions. Some of us will be writing at the same time. So if we're not making eye contact, that's because we're writing. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Webster.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for being with us. I'm going to start off by asking you to, in detail, describe for us the previous occasion when you negotiated a resolution to a problem that worked in everyone's best interest.
Madam President and Board of Trustees, thank you for that question. When I was a planning commissioner, I made a lot of decisions that were conflicting with other stakeholders. And so I had to work with stakeholders that were not necessarily agreeing on certain issues. And so as a planning commissioner for the city of Volante, I had that experience.
Thank you, thank you. All right. My next question will be as board members, we are charged and trusted with governing responsibly and effectively to accomplish the district's business. What comes to mind when you think of this detail?
Madam President and Board Trustees, that's a great question. What comes to mind is the balance, balancing the needs of the students and the teachers with the interests of the broader community in mind. I would prioritize transparent, open communication with all stakeholders to understand their concerns and priorities. I believe that a successful school district requires a shared vision. I would work to build relationships and foster collaboration to ensure that decisions are made with the best interest, best interest of all students in mind.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, trustee Webster.
And Mr. Sotos, I will be asking the next two questions. As a board member, you will be asked to commit a substantial amount of time to represent the district. Are you able to attend conferences, workshops to acquire the knowledge and skills needed to become an effective board member?
Madam President and Board Trustees, thanks for that question. Absolutely. I just finished my one year term as a planning commissioner, and I kept myself really busy. So I look forward to staying busy as well as a trustee.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is how do you feel the board handled the challenges caused by COVID in regards to distant learning and following state mandates?
Madam President and Board Trustees, that's an excellent question. Public safety or, yeah, the well being of our students is a very complex issue. But I believe that the district responded in the most efficient way possible. We're, our hands were tied. We had to respond to the COVID, COVID nineteen pandemic, and the state does not really give districts a choice. So we respond appropriately is my response to that.
Okay, thank you for your answers.
Thank you, trustee Turner.
All right, now it's my turn. Tell, tell us how you handled a situation in which someone disagreed with an idea or a vision that was very important to you.
Madam President and Board Trustees, thank you for the question. As a planning commissioner, I understand that criticism and opposition are natural part of the job. While I respect the opinions of those who disagree with me, I am committed to making decisions based on data and evidence and with the best interest of all students in mind. I would welcome feedback and input from all stakeholders and work to address concerns and build consensus wherever possible. As a planning commissioner, I have always had to work with my colleagues to make sure that we are voting on the best interest of our community. And so I look forward continuing to do that.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is, please tell, tell us about an experience when you had to think on your own two feet to make a difficult decision in face of much opposition.
Thank you for the question, trustee Miss Benz. I don't have the notes for this, but I'm going to get really vulnerable. Was a planning commissioner. I was voted three two because I was very passionate about certain issues in our community. And so I think that passion is important when it comes to this role. And so, you know, that's, if you can, my repeating the question just so I could clarify.
Now I got to read again.
Yeah.
Here we go. Please tell, tell us about an experience when you had to think on your own two feet to make a difficulty decision in face of much opposition.
So where I was getting that was the appointment of my planning commission. That was one of the moments where I had to make a decision whether I wanted to be a planning commissioner and work with big opposition or to not accept the, or to not continue being a planning commissioner. So my appointment as a planning commissioner was where I got a lot of opposition.
All right, thank, thank you.
Okay, moving on to question seven. What do you envision as a successful school district?
Transparency, thank you, Madam President, for the question. Transparency and collaborative, collaborative efforts between the district and the community. Like I said, I think it's important that we build relationships and we foster collaboration. So I believe that's where is best.
Thank you. Question number eight, what kind of attitudes and behaviors do you find most helpful when working on a team?
Thank you, Madam President and Board Trustees. The biggest trait that I would say is important to have as a trustee and to work with other stakeholders as well is emotional intelligence, your ability to work with all kinds of people with different backgrounds, regardless of their age, regardless of where they come from, and making sure that you're able to to make that difference. So emotional intelligence is my answer.
Thank you very much. That concludes the questions. We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and Board Trustees for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Madam President, Mrs. Lopez is on her way back.
Thank you. At this time, trustees, I need a motion for one of the candidates.
Trustee Turner, I motion to appoint Martha Lopez.
Can I get a second?
Webster, I second.
Z, can you call for the vote, please? Trustee Webster.
Nay.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, nay.
Trustee La French.
La French, nay.
Now I got to go on to the next one.
Yes, can I have another, can I have a motion?
Madam President, I would like to motion to appoint Miguel Soto, Jr.
Can I get a second?
Ben, I sec- second.
See, can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. And section four, I'm sorry, section point four point zero five, oath of office, swearing in and oath of office for board of trustee appointee for area three.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call Mr. Miguel Soto up to the podium. Sorry, Miguel Soto, Jr. I. I.
I.
Miguel Soto, Jr.
Miguel Soto, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support or offend and defend, defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
For the state of California.
The state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
In which upon I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. You will sign right there. If you stay here for a moment, Madam President, I'd like to turn it back over to you.
I want to say welcome aboard. I do. And I thank you for being here. I thank you for taking this step in your life and joining us. We appreciate you being here, and we know that you are going to be an asset and contribute to our board. Thank you. Any other trustees at this time like to?
Well, I do want to say something. First thing, Mrs. Lo- Lopez, I want to thank, thank you for the time you took to to apply. I honestly did not know who I was going to vote for. I honestly did, didn't know. And I appreciate you go, going through, through with this. And Miguel Soto, you're in trouble, man. No, well, well, welcome aboard. Your, your energy, your pa- passion, I think is going to do great on this, this board.
Ms. Turner.
Again, to both candidates. You know, thank you for, you know, putting your application in. Ms. Lopez, you know, don't give up, you know, don't give up. You have passion. You, you volunteer in our classrooms with our children and our teachers. So I'm looking, hopefully, you know, you take it upon yourself. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Soto, are you looking at your application? You have a ton of experience. You served on the planning commission. And I feel that it was, it was tough. Yeah, I think that you'll serve our district well in making decisions based on what's good for our kids and our district and our staff and our everyone. Okay, so congratulations. Thank you.
Trustee Webster.
Okay, good evening. I do want to extend my gratitude to both candidates. Thank you for taking the time applying and dedicating yourself to this process. I do want to go on and congratulate Mr. Soto, Jr. Welcome to our board. I, I was very impressed by your application as it definitely announces quite a few qualities. I look forward to welcoming you onto our board and seeing what we can accomplish in the next couple of years.
At this time, I'd like to invite you to take your seat. At this time, I'd like to invite you to take your seat. Moving on to section five, Governing Board Members' Reports and Announcements. I will start with Trustee Turner.
I'll keep my comments short tonight. Another shooting at our schools. Three children, three staff member, and a suspect. My heart is hurting right now because of the senseless acts against our precious children and staff. I don't understand why people target our children. Why? My heart grieved for the family loss. This act of violence is heart-wrenching, to say the least. Parents send their children to school to learn, to get a good education, to have fun, and engage with other students. Staff come to work to aid our children and to be safe. I cannot wrap my head around this senseless shooting in our schools, in our country. Why? We must find effective ways to protect our students and our staff. Period. We need to invest in the resources to make that happen. I understand that some parents do not want to see metal detectors or police on campuses. However, the world has changed, and it's apparent that extreme measures are needed to protect our students and staff. I believe that this board is committed to this endeavor of safety, and I'm asking at this time to direct the superintendent to put the highest security measures in place to protect our family. Thank you.
Trustee Webster?
I will keep my comments short tonight. I do want to extend my gratitude to everyone here tonight. Thank you, Melanie, for your kind words. I did appreciate her classroom visit, along with many more. I do have to go on the books and say that when I get to walk classrooms, I'm in a happy place, right? Like, the rest of the world goes away and I get to be a kid. Thank you for letting me do that, darling. After that, I do want to give congratulations to Mr. Kraus for all of your hard work, and I will end my comments there.
Trustee Benz?
I really don't have much compliments. I'm just thinking, thinking this is a downward slope to the end of the school year. You know, I love my class, but once test, testing is done, this is like the downhill, so I wish the classes and the kids all, all, all the best, especially the test, testing time, because we get to undo what COVID did to, to our kids' ed, education. So, please, you all have, have a good night.
Thank you. Trustee Soto? I'm gonna get it right. Let me get it right.
I just want to extend my gratitude to now my colleagues who trusted me and appointed me as their trustee. I want to thank my community for being supportive, and I want to thank my siblings for being here as well. You guys are super supportive, and I just want to thank you guys for being here. I also want to thank God, most and foremost, for this opportunity. And I know this is gonna take a long time to earn the community's respect, so I look forward to doing that. And I know it's gonna take a while, but, um, I recognize that. So, thank you guys for, for the opportunity, and I look forward to meeting you guys all.
Okay, so at this time, I don't want to sound like I'm going off on a tangent. I do have three things that I want to talk about. Um, the first thing that I want to talk about is that I concur with Trustee Turner. The safety of our schools should be our, at the top of our list. The safety for our children, for our staff members. I sometimes go places and I see things going on, and I ask myself like, hmm, like, what's this person doing? You know, is this person actually doing what they're supposed to be doing? I would like to take the time right now to also say that, I would like for, you know, our superintendent to make sure that this is put at the top of his list as far as making sure that each individual schools have what they need. I hear sometimes, you know, people being shifted between our middle schools. Both schools, all schools, need someone there in order to be diligently walking around and making sure that our children are inside of their classrooms, that our children are just not going from one place to another, hiding. We need that at this time. We need it like yesterday. Something else that I haven't said anything about, that I went on a field trip recently. And when I talk to people, when I talk to teachers, as I always say, you know, that no matter where I go in my profession, when I started off at 25, I started off inside of the classroom. I want to see a stronger hold on cell phones, I think, that go in your ear. It's hurtful to me to hear that teachers are wrestling with, you know, children, you know, to put their phones away, or, you know, parents are calling saying, why are you looking at my child's back pocket? You know, why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? Or the children are not engaged because you're trying to talk over someone that has already have their AirPods in their ear. We need to have something in place that has a no tolerance for cell phones. Cell phones do not belong out. We need to make sure that parents know that we are not the keeper of their children's $700, $1,400 cellphone. We're not gonna take and keep them and then be held responsible for them. If they have it out, then maybe they shouldn't be at school. Somebody has to be held responsible and not teachers to oversee children with cell phones and AirPods and ignoring staff members. The third thing that I wanted to address, and I will let Mr. Kraus speak on it. I'm happy of what has happened, when it has, that negotiations, what it turned out to be, and maybe some people may not know that is in this room, but I would like for him to speak on it now.
Thank you, Madam President. Can everybody hear me on this one? All right, if you're a teacher in this room, could you please stand up for me?
Oh, I'm a teacher.
I know Jen Raider would be here. She's on her way here, uh, right now. Today was a monumental day for negotiations with the district. It's been a journey that we have been working with the ADTA Executive Board and negotiating team on. I want to give them the highest praise that I can for the work that they're doing. You all, you all should be proud. I don't feel like anybody can hear me on this thing. Doesn't sound loud. Okay, okay. I, I want to say that you all should be very proud of the work that they have done. They have met with us consistently, and all of the support that you all have done. Look at how many of you are here tonight, not knowing what may have happened today. So I, I know Jen, she, she was trying to get over here. We were at the CTA office in Asperia, uh, by the college over there. But I have to stay, say, uh, thank you to all of you for all of your hard work on a daily basis. Thank you to our board for the support they have given our team, our negotiating team at the district level, and the direction to make it happen. And pending a, it could be her coming in right now. No, dad, dumb it. I was hoping, I was but, uh, Ms. Terry Smith, come on up. You were, you were over there today. I want to, I want to bring her up there. She was over there today, her hard work, and I want to thank her, and Jen were also over there today in the, in the room as we did a lot of, uh, talking, but, uh, pending, again, Bargain Unit Member Approval, pending Board Approval. We, there's a lot more to it, but just to let you know, for a retroactive to July 1st of this year, we've settled on 12%. Retro to July 1st of this current year. That is for this current year. So, uh, you will hear more from Jen and her team, but we do have a signed TA, which again, has to go to the Bargain Unit Members for approval, and then come to our board for approval. But I tell you, it was a long journey. I want to thank Adam Contreras. He was the negotiating lead. Did an excellent job for being there and helping us as well. Maybe that's Jen. It is! There you go! I want to have Jen come up. Jen, come up here, Jen, come on. I was just thanking
Don't be shy.
all of them, and I'm gonna turn the mic over to you. I appreciate, I was telling you, you were on your way and you were trying to get here, so.
Well, I'm so glad to see you all here. Thank you so much for your support. It's been wonderful. Really think I can happily say that we've reached a TA. Today, you'll hear more details about tomorrow, and I think Thursday, too, the E-Board has to talk about when we're gonna be presenting it. We're happy with what we, what we came up with. Hope you will be too.
Again, thank you, Jen, and your entire team, uh, the E-Board, the negotiating team, and we're excited that we were able to come to an agreement today and finalize it before the board meeting. So, uh, and, and thank you to all of you, seriously, uh, you know. Appreciate all of you coming here. Hey, thank the negotiating team on, on your side. I mean, a lot of work they put into it, many, many hours. I know you guys put a lot of hours in, in what you do as well, and so, uh, on behalf of our board and cabinet, we want to thank you as well for all the work you do, so. Uh, thank you so much, and we look forward to, uh, the next steps in the process, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Moving on to section six, adjournment. Trustees, I need a motion to adjourn.
Webster, I motion.
Under my second. Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote. Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Soto?
I.
Trustee La French? La French, I. The time is 6:04. This meeting is adjourned.
Glad Jen was able to come right at the right moment. Like, I was, I knew she was on the bench.